Call this meeting of the Melbourne Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Let the record show that Erin and Kyle are both absent tonight.
Five fifteen.
Certified the agenda. Motion to certify the agenda.
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Five vote. Robert B. Lee is up there.
Lord, we come to you today, thank you for your mercy and your grace, and the many blessings that you do give us daily. We also thank you for the rain that we had last week. And Lord, we ask you to just keep everyone safe as the summer draws to a close fairly soon for the teachers and staff and cheerleaders as well. We also ask you to keep the athletes, cheerleaders, and band members safe as they prepare for the upcoming seasons and dealing with the usual heat here in Texas. And in our hearts and our minds, as we make decisions on business at hand today, and that these decisions will have a positive impact on this district. Forgive us where we fall short of your glory, and help us be light unto others. These things we ask your sons for today. Amen.
Pledges.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thanks to everybody.
No sir, not that they gave me anybody who would speak in public. I didn't get a phone from anybody. No sir.
Everybody had a chance to look over the consent agenda?
We do have, I believe, one correction. You already fixed that on here? Okay. Yeah, let's take care of it. Okay?
Get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion.
Motion made by Robert.
Second.
Seconded by Scott. All those in favor? Five vote.
Thank you.
First action item is the compensation plan.
Okay. Change of going to present that.
Okay, you have in your board, I think, a compensation plan. It also includes the extra day stop-in schedule that you already put. You know, changes on that that should sit in there. So you're seeing the whole compensation plan. Understanding is you've been given that information on the salary scales that didn't change. We only had a handful of salary scales that changed, mostly due going to the four-day weekend. Weekend. Yeah.
Four days, four weeks.
Four days, four weeks. Three-day weekend.
I was like, wait, is that right? Which was primarily custodians and maintenance workers that were the biggest impact on that. We did increase cafeteria worker, paraprofessional, and child nutrition director was moved based on the fact that we moved cafeteria workers. Remember, those do come out of 240 federal nutrition monies. Those do not come out of local funds. They were paid out of a different fund source. The campus secretaries, we increased to try to keep them above paraprofessionals. So it was like, once you shift one, it staggers everyone a little bit. So paraprofessionals, campus secretaries, custodial maintenance. Our LBN scale was way too low. We did look at market for that. We did meet witness base. That is only one person that we have in district on an LBN salary scale. So it impacts one person. So that is for that increase. And then again, the child nutrition director change was based on moving per staff as well. We also realized as we were doing salary assessments that she was actually working more days or less paid than previous directors. So we didn't make that adjustment. Those are the only changes that you see. There was no change to the teacher scales since there was no additional money received from the legislative session for classroom teachers.
And what specializations, if they did change that, we'll bring that back to you at that time, like upon the end.
Yes.
As you've seen, what this is being built upon is, as I've shared with you before, some starting salary numbers that adjust, of course, as goes through the scale. Part of it is just for us to become more competitive with the job market as we're trying to fill some of these positions that we are having a harder time filling, especially those that are, you know, some of the, some of the jobs that are...
Especially, we were, I mean, I hate to say, we were sitting here going, what can you make at Duke's and Seth Co? And we're putting these paraprofessionals in classes with students. Also, there is an assessment, there needs to be a, there is a content-based assessment that they have to show a competency level on. And we were finding that at that lower rate, we were struggling to get paraprofessionals that were able to pass that content competency exam so that we can keep them since we receive federal Title I money. That allows us to be able to utilize them in all areas. So again, just trying to stay marketable to pull good instructional aids in the classrooms. So those were the only scale changes.
Paraprofessionals.
And that compensation plan.
Is that the one that went up really?
No.
Well, the LBN?
Yeah, LBN went up some.
Yes, the starting pay for LBN was 26,000. We moved it to 32,000 starting pay.
So the teacher stayed the same, LBN starting pay adjusted.
From 26 to 32.
Speech, language, pathologist stayed the same. Police officer.
No change.
Change, no change. Paraprofessional.
Paraprofessional, yes.
Starting pay changed.
It start, used to be 17,952. We moved it to 20,000,944, which in essence, if you were looking at hourly, went from 12 hours, $12 an hour, sorry, to $14 an hour. So that's your change if you're thinking in hourly. We do annualize.
So because the paraprofessional changed, there was a little bit of a change in campus secretary.
As well, 50 cents more an hour. So campus secretary scale, starting with zero years, was 20,200. That moved to 23,432. The equivalent was a 50 cent increase from their 1250 to 1450, but it's a $2, just like the paraprofessionals.
Custodial salary scale changed.
Custodials changed, and that was predominantly just with the decrease in days, shifting them around. Really, maintenance and custodial staff, we had to kind of step in backwards to looking at their hours, how much they work, because they work a lot of days here in the district. And then we set that in the reporting.
Cafeteria worker scale changed a little.
Yes, a cafeteria worker went from 14,245 starting to 16,734 starting. That was an $11 hourly rate increase to a 1250 hourly rate increase. Again, that's a federal 240 fund source that does not hit us for local funding.
General maintenance changed a little bit. Maintenance plumbing, HVAC changed a little bit. Electrical, mechanical.
And mechanical changed, yes. So all of the maintenance ones were hit. Those are the only ones that changed. Substitute did increase. Substitute scale, we were at 80, 90, 100. We did that increase because we've gotten feedback from substitutes that are feeling that we're, they're kind of hitting a loss of funds, not having that fifth day to sub. So we increased that to 100, 110, and 120. They still get an additional if they work 10 or more days. Again, that's to try to get substitutes to get more jobs to us. So they do set in at that higher rate. So we did increase that because we have had a lot of feedback from our substitute staff on the four days will be changed. And we are struggling already with the subs that have committed to come back to us this year, early into the next year.
What was that issue you were talking about, Linda, with the 10 days or something with the subs?
Oh, if it's, if you, if you do a long-term sub, if you're certified or just sign up for long-term sub, you have to work two weeks before you get the long-term subpay.
Correct.
And I just don't think that's fair.
Well, now, if they, if they work the two weeks and we know they're set in as a long-term subscale, we set them in at that long-term scale. We set them in at that rate.
You do now?
Yes.
Okay, because you didn't.
Yes, no, if they're setting it, so say that we have a person that we know is going to ride up the school year, we hold them to that either scale. Because we know we're working 10-plus days.
Okay. Because that, that was a, when I did a long-term sub for Ms. Gable, I had two weeks that I didn't get the long-term pay.
Yes, no, we have adjusted that.
Okay.
For that reason, because we don't pay them on, obviously, a certified teacher's scale, but especially if we have a long-term sub coming in, especially as certified, because that's the goal, so that we are covered in that time. We're setting them in at the 10-plus day scale, once we know that they're going long-term.
Okay.
So I'm not sure when that changed. When did you?
Too long.
Too long.
I was gonna say, we've, we've made that change because we did find them.
Yeah, because it's, I mean, it's not fair. You're doing the grades, you're doing the, a lot of the work. You know, most of you give you, certified, most of them give you a basic, and then you do everything else. So it's really not fair.
So we accept them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Did you say the stipend list, did that change at all?
No change to the stop-in list. That was as presented and approved last time. Yes, so that one is just in more as the overall compensation.
Get a motion to approve the 2324 NBISD compensation plan.
Motion.
Linda. Seconded by Robert. All in favor? Five vote.
Thank you.
Consider approval of 2324 T-Test appraisers.
And what you have before you in board book is the certified appraisers that will be evaluating for T-Tests. Level-one appraisers, as presented in the past, those are your immediate campus supervisors. The only time level, level-two appraisers trigger is if a classroom teacher has requested a second evaluation. If there is dispute, we have not, we're not going to add that since I've been here. So that's when it triggers a level-two appraiser to come in and do a reevaluation. So those are in the set for this year.
Have a motion to approve the 2324 T-Test appraisal list.
I'll make that motion.
By Linda, seconded by Leanne.
Leanne made the motion, I'll second.
All in favor? Five votes. Approval of the 2324 T-Test appraisal calendar.
Okay, this is the state appraisal calendar. We are required to have board action and approval on that. This is shared with all teachers. We do post this on our human resources page, as well in our Google Drive for curriculum instruction, just so that any teachers who aren't on a full year of T-Test observation do know that timeline, and it's kind of a reminder of how their timeline should be working, when they should have pre-conferences, when they should have a post-conference, and then also gives hard numbers for principals as they're setting in their evaluation schedule to pace off your appointments with teachers.
Have a motion to approve the 2324 T-Test appraisal calendar. Robert. Seconded by Scott. All in favor? Five vote. Approval of the 2324 T-Pass appraisal calendar.
Love our acronyms.
Yeah.
Loves those acronyms.
Is that a new?
So, no, this is, this is our principal evaluation system. And so the only people that are under this one are our campus principals. So that is our three campus principals. This is the appraisal calendar in place, and they do have my appraisal with Dr. McCullough at end of year whether conference.
Have a motion to approve the 2324 T-Pass appraisal calendar.
That's it.
I make the motion.
Scott. Robert, second. All in favor? Five vote.
That was a pretty easy one there.
Have a new finance director, so we have a few things to take care of with him, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Designate Craig Craver as our new finance director. Designate him as an investment officer for NBISD.
Yes, sir. That's just, most, our recommendation is for that as our finance officer, our finance director. That's part of his duties, and just needs board approval to make that take place.
I'll make the motion to designate Craig Craver, finance director, as an investment officer for NBISD. Seconded by Robert. All in favor? Five vote. Authorize Craig Craver, finance director, to conduct state and federal business for NBISD.
Again, same thing in regard to, different from what Barbara R. Pamme, the one did. Now Craig is our finance director, needs to have board approval to conduct state and federal business for our district through the tilt process.
Motion for that.
I make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Five vote.
Thank you.
Authorize Craig Craver to inquire, sign, and conduct this banking business for all bank accounts owned by NBISD.
Again, even though we've hired him as finance director, still needs board approval for this action, for him to do business with the bank on behalf of the district as well.
I should make.
Second. All in favor? Five vote.
You had the second?
Yeah.
Okay. Josh did the second, yes. Okay?
Consider and approve, in our local agreement with Techstar for Public Funds Investment Pool, amended resolution.
So what this would allow us to do, and I'm gonna let Craig to give a little more information if you need it, in regard to once our bond sale, for us to be able to put money into Techstar, which we currently don't have access to. It is a state-run pool. Is that correct? State-run pool to where have in-and-out access without any penalty. You want to give any other information other than that?
We'll put the majority of the bond sale in that because our depository bank is Alliance Bank, and I don't think they're at a point where they can take in $24 million deposit all at once. They have said that they want to take some of it, and we'll be glad to give them the portion that they'd like to have that. We've got to put this one somewhere else, and this is the place that we can put it. It's a, still a really good interest rate, so I think this is where we need to put it.
Okay. So they pay interest on that money for us while it sits there as we use it?
Yes, it is there. Would we use it? Contacted our finance advisor, five vote today, and he said there's a, it's more complicated than I thought it might be, and it was more complicated for him. He said, there's somebody else I gotta talk to, but there's only certain ways that you can use the interest on that bond money while it's gaining interest. You can use it on the projects, but then it can't go over the project cost, and there were some other things. And so he's supposed to get back with me and answer those questions, because I actually emailed him and asked him.
What kind of interest did it take?
I think right now it was 5.06 at Techstar.
What's the bank gonna pay?
The bank, the bank.
You want to share that information today? I'm gonna share it to y'all later, but I'll let him share it. Some really good news.
It was 1.51, and that's what the, the capital said when it was first national bank, and when the lines bought them out, they didn't change it. So it's always been capped at 1.51. Well, the 13-week T-bill is 5.1 now, 5.5. So my second day, I went to the lines and said, we gotta discuss this. This is, this is too low. And so they called me back the next week and said, well, we cap all of our municipals at 5%, so they're gonna give us 5% on every bank.
Good. Yeah.
A bit of revenue.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, for sure.
That's goodness.
Yeah, great news.
Great news. Thank you.
We need a motion to consider and approve, in our local agreement with Techstar, for public funds investment pool. Robert, motion.
5%.
Robert makes a motion. Seconded by Scott. All in favor? Five vote.
Thank you.
Consider and possible action toward construction manager at risk contract for Proposition A project.
Okay. So what I've given you is, we received bids, we'll leave it back up. Last year, when we started this process, we did, we did interviews. Josh and Erin and myself sent an interview. We had four companies that, that set for interviews. Joris, Construction, Jackson, HWH, and BTC. At that time, they also submitted sealed bids for that. As you know, bond did not pass, so we didn't move forward with acting on a CMAR construction company. We solicited bids again. We contacted, Jessica herself personally contacted all four companies with what we thought was going to be a good bid opening on June 8th. As I shared with you, our paper did not print either one of the postings that we had to have. We did not catch that. That's on us for not catching that. Till after we had opened on June 8th, once we saw that, contacted our law firm to verify that we did have to post that we couldn't, that we would have to go again. So we reposted, and it did run. We got same three, or backup. We did not get a, on June 8th, we did not get a bid from Joris. June 29th, we had the official bid opening. We received bids from Jackson, HWH, BTC. What I've, what I've given you, what we've prepared for you, is showing you the, the three bids that, from each company, which the three, well, the first one from Joris. But we've shown you what they, what they bid on each one of the, each time. Of course, in 2022, the construction cost was less. It was for 31.6 million. Construction, or the cost from this one was bid for 38,160. So I've shared those numbers with you. You see a pre-construction fee lump sum, construction service fee percentage, then the construction cost, then the, you figure the construction fee amount, general conditions minus lump sum, minus labor plus, or lump sum, labor plus materials, then total construction cost is construction fee plus general conditions, and then the total cost of all that put together. I think through the interviews, as well as through the packets, and looking at the performance of each one, as well as taking what we have, as you see, Jackson Construction on all three, going back from 2022 to June 8th to June 29th, has, has been the, the best bid that we've received on each one. Of course, BTC's been right there, close. All three companies that are bid are quality companies, have done quality work, but based upon the numbers that we have, my recommendation for you to award would be Jackson Construction for our CMAR company.
Do you want to interview?
Jackson Construction, BTC, HWH, and Joris.
Well, no, did we?
We did not re, we did not re-interview, we just took bids. We did not re-interview this year. So we just took new bids based upon the, on the current numbers with the project.
Questions?
Last year, that was you, Josh, Erin?
Erin.
Sat down with me?
Yes, ma'am. Each of the three companies have all done similar scope of work. Checked with different schools, looked, and even got to see some of the different work they've done. Again, good recommendations all the way around. Again, again, out of all that put together, I'm, I'm basing my recommendation again upon the numbers that have been presented to us.
Make a motion that we hire Jackson Construction for construction manager at risk contract for Proposition A.
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Jackson, with Jackson Construction's here, if you'd like to say anything?
Well, I can't tell you how much we appreciate the athletic work here. It was the third regeneration, and we do go after very aggressively, and looking forward to, it's approximately 20 to 24-month project. It's a tough project, but we do a lot of projects within campus, and very experienced at it. Looking forward to it. Very, very excited about it.
Many rest of the time that you're not gonna sit down and talk about where we're putting everybody?
Yes.
While we're doing this?
Yeah, there'll be a lot of, a lot of logistics, a lot of planning, a lot of, a lot, a lot of planning for this one.
I don't know what keeps you up at night, but that's what keeps me up at night. Where are we gonna put kids during the two years of what we're doing this?
I think our documents, our first documents are supposed to be ready, what, April 24? Yeah, start construction, uh, 24, June, approximately June 24, to about June 26.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it'll be logistically a challenge.
For sure.
But we can do it.
We've got faith in you, appreciate your willingness to do the job.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity.
We look forward to, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
He's a pretty good guy. Needs to be my name.
Really? Thought I didn't know.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for being here.
All right, consider and possible action regarding purchase of real property and to allocate authority to the superintendent to negotiate and execute contracts for purchase of said real property not to exceed $150,000 plus any closing fees.
I've given you a Google Earth map to show you approximately what we're talking about. The school's been approached by the Industrial Foundation. Mr. Bob McFarland is here, executive director of Industrial Foundation. If you have some questions in regard to some land that the Industrial Foundation is looking to purchase, and has offered the school the opportunity to purchase some of that land to use in regard to, specifically, what we'd be able to use it for is in regard to the athletic complex of Proposition B, to give us some additional space there on the south side of the campus. Again, the Industrial Foundation, can I share that? Executive meeting on, executive, had the executive meeting on Friday, and voted in favor to approve the sale of up to 20 acres to the district. So that is sitting on our table for us to do so. Your approximate closing?
July 21st.
So July 21st. So the reason for the, for the action to be this way would be, again, Helis is here as well, can answer some questions in regard to logistics of the fields and what options that'll give us, but would allow, for you, if you approve this motion, would allow me to work with Bob, Industrial Foundation, in moving that ahead without necessarily the school having to wait till the next board meeting to do something. Of course, I would keep you involved in regard to, and informed in regard to what we're doing with that, but that would allow us to move forward with that, until having to wait till August, several of the August board meetings if needed.
In the picture here, how many acres is that?
That's 20, that's the 20, that's, again, that's what the Google Earth, that is. I don't know how I did it exactly, but it came out exactly 20 acres. One thing different on that of what the Industrial Foundation is gonna ask is they're on the Highway 37 side, and but there is a open lot there that is in between Brad Hyman's house and, I don't know who's house.
Whoever the next person is.
Whoever the closest to the elementary is. There's a little place there. Industrial Foundation is asking really for the, the property line there where the fence is, for us to come in a little bit to leave them an acre? Is that what you asked for? A little less than acre?
That's probably enough. We just need enough room for generous access to that lot that we hope will be the entry lot, but depending on what happens going forward, it might be the entry lot.
So the hope is eventually that the rest of that acre, that Industrial Foundation said it will be for future development, neighborhood-wise, which again, would be an awesome addition right there by our school as well, for our community. But so what you see there goes from property line to property line. So it would actually, the actual park would come in. We would have to get that surveyed, of course, and that would be a part of the closing fees with that, but, but it's gonna be a great opportunity for our district.
I guess as far as like the layout of the ballfields, Randy, does that, does that help us?
We actually have a little perimeter meeting, it does. Yeah, it, it can move everything west.
Yeah.
And cutting away from the drainage.
So if you look at your site plan that Helis gave you, what we talked about before, when we were meeting in my office before we came in here, you see the football field drainage comes out.
Is that the yellow line there?
That's the, well, it's the little black line, really what comes through there. Comes, so it'd almost go right under the bleacher behind home plate. So what this would allow us to do is what we talked about, and let me see, did he, do you know?
The yellow line's a reroute, that's the five.
That's a reroute? Okay.
And we just, we actually, it's in our handboxes right now.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's what I was looking for. I'll, I'll pass this around to shoot to you if we can. They've kind of did a preliminary redrawing of what it could look like. So by moving this, there's the drainage ditch. Having the twiners allows us to bring the baseball softball field over. What we would probably have to do is stack the tennis courts, if you can see that. Okay, but with...
Will that be like a fence in the middle?
Yes, yes. No, that's why I was trying to, I just got an email, he just sent it to us after we talked about it. But see, so it shifts baseball and softball really more right behind, more, almost where the tennis court sets on your, on your deal. It allows us to bring that back.
Drainage.
Yeah, because there's your drainage ditch, so we keep the drainage out of the play of all of this. We'll still probably have discus and chop put over here, since we're taking it out of over here. You'll see long jump, triple jump, and pole vault are all there. North side of the fieldhouse, of what would be now behind the visitor stands once everything's completed.
So everything can stay like it is for this year and once they.
Correct.
It also, it helps center off the complex as well with the parking lot.
Yeah.
You know, those parking lots that are mirroring each other?
Right.
Well, with track, I think is, what are we gonna do? If they're gonna start on these fields after they get through the turf, what's they're gonna do?
So we might not have our track meet this year.
But what about practice as far as pole vault?
Correct.
If that's, they're gonna be cheering the stadium out.
Will the track, will the football bit piece of the track and field be, be available by?
It's gonna be the first thing that we put together. We'll, we'll build those and we'll be able to, that's his, I'm answering for him, you know what? We will be able to put those together and then probably, you know, there's not gonna be a lot of work on that old one side, visitor side. So he would logistically figure that so we can get the kids going for track. But.
If we do have some potential for people.
Yeah.
There is.
We're gonna, we're gonna maintain.
You gotta remember, it's gonna, it's gonna be also a construction zone. I mean, we're gonna do, put a lot of leashes out there.
But not so much on that side, thankfully.
I know with the lions, we're still gonna talk about the, you know, those things. You still have lions and you're gonna have a building being built, you know, down there on that northeast corner.
Right.
So I mean, it's gonna be, there, there's gonna be, you know, he'll have it all set up for, you know, who's moving, safety. I mean, that'll be the biggest thing.
Sure.
But, you know, there will be construction going on while kids are here in school.
Correct.
And sports are going on, can't stop it, so.
Okay. Did y'all see that closure up?
And that's not final, but that's, that's pretty, that's kind of a close as would, would kind of look like.
So your tennis courts, we end up having partition between them, since you're gonna stack them.
We probably stack them. Stack them is probably on the east side, we probably have a viewing area so you can watch.
Between the stacked courts, you can have a net or something.
Well, and what we, what we could do, and we'll, we'll look at it for five years, for you guys to follow. And we built these, we may have a, a aisle. A breezeway for you to look, maybe a little view from the inside as well.
Without having to route that whole drainage ditch.
Just major stacks on top.
Oh, yeah.
And stacking them.
Get a motion to consider the. Purchase of real property and to delegate authority to superintendent to negotiate and execute the contract for purchase of said real property not to exceed 150,000 plus any closing fees.
Motion made.
Seconded by Leanne. All in favor?
Thank you.
Last item, consider approval of cafeteria breakfast and lunch prices for 23, 24.
Pull that back up here. As you see, we're gonna be a CEP district for this coming school year. So pre-K through four, well, pre-K through 12, all will have opportunity to free, free breakfast and free lunch. If they were to get a second meal, 10 cents is, or 10 cents has been added for the breakfast as well as 10 cents for the lunch for the student. Employee goes up 20 cents. Visitor goes up for breakfast, 20 cents goes up. Visitor goes up 20 cents as well. Lunch goes up 60 cents for employee and 60 cents for visitor on lunch as well. But again, every student can get their, their meal free. They don't have to pay if they want additional.
How do we get the CEP?
We can clock for it.
Yeah.
We just. Forward, there were two different food plan services offered. And so Heather Creed, he had reached out to some other districts, so we're running a CEP. The second one we're looking at was a provisional plan, and so we kind of worked back into the numbers. We wanted to take it into that. So there's just requirements that we have to meet to make sure that we're getting our enrollment numbers. You have to have a certain number of socioeconomic percentage in our school district and be feeding, consistently feeding a percentage of students. So with our numbers, we've been meeting that with the changes that we have with CEP that went through. We've got more students than ever eating there. And then the years that we've watched with COVID, with middle school and high school, when the state kind of covered that, the race sports high school, we're hoping with the changes with the cafeteria and, and the reorganization of that, we see that are getting pushed there. The middle school numbers were significantly higher, running back for you.
Have a motion to approve cafeteria breakfast and lunch prices for 23, 24. Motion made by Robert, seconded by Scott. All in favor? Five vote. All right, information allowed. Now we can have construction.
I'm gonna ask the Helis guys, kind of give us an updating regard to where we are on the, on the football field, kind of what's taking place, kind of what's next, and kind of what to expect.
Sure, so right now, we're in the drainage phase. We've got all the collector pipe, the drainage pipe in place in the ground. We're installing the drainage stone, which goes on top. We'll be done with that mid to end of next week. We've got E-layer scheduled for July 20th. That's the cushion, the shock pad that goes on top of the stone under the turf. We've got turf scheduled to start July 24th. That'll take until August 11th. This will be in and out plenty of time before, for something.
Excellent.
Thought is give them a couple of weeks on it, a couple of weeks to do it, adjustment, they'll be very happy.
So even the first, even the home scrimmage will be able to play on that thing? Good, hope so.
Is the weather impacting? I mean, quite often.
So I'm not, I'm not sure the last time we had this much rain is July 8th, 9th, and 10th, for sure.
There was people all over the place in Dallas this morning. We had about two inches on July 10th. They're looking at maybe 20 years ago when it rained for two inches on July 10th.
A lot, yeah.
So everybody was happy, but we were all.
So let me also address, and I've, I've sent Lily something to ask her to put in the paper. I don't, I don't know if she'll be able to or not, but I've asked her to. I've just kind of called it an update, but included in that is I know there's been several questions. I know Chandra said she'd been asked a couple of times as well of, of, out of the bond passing, why is football field being done first? As we shared, as I shared, I think in each one of the town halls, was that the football field was first and was intended to be first because it was not as complex a building program as what our school is gonna be. As well as the design build of already being there currently right now. Again, we've just scraped off the grass and we're laying turf. And so that is a much quicker process as we're still going through with our architects, finalizing plans and everything like that. As you just heard from Mr. Jackson, you know, construction for, for Proposition A will not even start until next summer as we're finalizing plans, getting everything put in place for that. So the athletic complex, again, this was all discussed through each one of our town halls. There's the real possibility that all of Proposition B will be completed before the dirt moving and construction starts on Proposition A just because of the type of projects they are. They are totally different projects. And so not that Proposition B was more important than Proposition A, it's just the different complexities of each one of the projects, the nature of each project. Yep.
The architecture that goes into what we gotta do. It's not too hard in architecture, building, session stand, football field, baseball field.
Yep.
Thank you.
Wow, wow, man.
Scrape and put it down.
Maybe just a little bit more than that, is that what you're saying? Yeah, that's right. But anyway, so anyway, so I hopefully should, again, just try to give the public who reached the paper a little bit more information as well. Hopefully that'll answer some of those questions, or if somebody's watching the, the video, the board meeting, they'll, they'll kind of hear that as well and understand why, why that is going first and what's taking place. Yep.
We are gonna get back out and survey when we're, when we have the building for the new land.
Okay.
To shift everything and then we'll place everything appropriately, based off the survey. And then we'll go from there and then we'll file out some numbers and it goes back to you as soon as, as soon as we can.
Okay. Good, very good. Okay.
About how long it's take to build a baseball and softball field? What year?
100 days.
100 days? It's pretty fast.
Yeah. And the, the dirt's good.
Oh, that's good.
However, it's was a good soil.
Yeah.
That's not the case in a lot of places in Texas. He's probably going, I'll say 100 days.
He, he's staying awful quiet while you're doing the dogging, that's right.
If that just the fields are.
Now, that's the, that's the sense of it. Home walls, the, now the, the longest thing, and he'll tell you this, and it's true, those builds will be ready probably. The building will probably take a little bit longer. You know, just, just because it does, you know, you gotta wear different roofs and specialty items and fish outs and all those things. The builds are, we get going, those we rub them.
So we'll be able to start that as soon as we finish up the football field.
That's the plan.
That's the plan, yeah.
Yeah.
Just move across the street, start there?
And get started.
We want to try to have them, and you know, I think softball starts the third week of January. I mean, that's our goal. You know, we're doing a lot of those and we always try, if there's, if there's still a place in case, just to have it ready maybe. You know, Carthage, we, we got them in at spring break. We started maybe September in, at last year. We're starting earlier here, but we just, we wanted to make sure that it's special for the kids and it's ready. And you know, we can have an opening and it's finished. So we won't have to come back and work and do different things, but.
Remind me with the, what's the bid with the tennis courts? It's gotta be a certain temperature or something before you put those down?
Yes.
Those can be not till like next summer or something.
He's the king of those.
Oh, yeah.
I think we've done.
You got the recipe?
Three rounds. Yeah, it needs to be, it, it needs to be 50 degrees, you know, at night. You know, it's 50 degrees during the day, but you know, slabs, when it's 32 degrees, it's still cold. And it just won't, it just won't pay.
Sat, right? Yeah, we're just talking about the tennis surface.
The servicing.
The paint that goes on top of the concrete slab. Slabs will be built anytime, but the service, it's gotta be 60 and rising.
All right, so we're talking probably into school, maybe before tennis courts finished?
Probably earlier than that, but yeah, it's, it's gonna be spring.
Okay.
It's spring.
Okay.
You said you could build a slab, but we just have to wait until.
So for, so for this, for our total project, tennis courts will probably be the last thing completed?
Yes, yes. Service for servicing.
Okay. Any other questions for those guys while they're here with us tonight?
Just one of those dynamics of. Line up out there, just piles of bags.
Dig in there.
I would think it's probably the cooling infield, the echo room, is that right?
I think it's the E-layer material. Ground up rubber that goes in the shock pad. The cushions.
So on the, so on the infield for the football fields, you know, you use, most of them are rubber, you know, the black rubber. So the cord, the cord rubber, the bigger rubber, that's what we used to tape the pad on the stone. So that cushioning pad, it pours and water goes through the turf and it goes right through the pad. So I mean, you can have one of the worst rainstorms you could ever have as long as we can get it out, but you have a great ditch to get it out. But your plan in five minutes, probably it's not like, there's no delay. It's pretty, the technology and the infrastructure, pretty good.
Great. Great. Okay. Anything else for them? Guys, yeah, thank y'all for coming. Thank you. Thank you.
Convene to closed session for personnel matters pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.0074.
What time did you have?
Six. Six, I have six being.
All right, the board will now reconvene into open session at 7:09. Two more things, acknowledge professional contracts that's approved by the superintendent.
We have, yes, sir, we have Ismael Aguilar, Jennifer Evans, Norma Francis, Shelby Bryson, and Taryn Dungan are the new hires since last board meeting.
Donovan or Donovan?
Dungan.
Dungan.
Get a motion to.
Here's acknowledging them. Okay. Resignation, resignation, have resignations since the last board meeting of William McElwain. That's the only one we have since then. That's it.
Meeting adjourned at 7:09.